Praise the Lord to every one of you.
Andar ki praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. It gives me great joy to be here among you once again because I have come here before also and taken one sister's meeting before.
Thakumundu gudam, idigir guchinavudu sahodarila kudigatiskunnu, marlo okshari devadi vidanga avkashamichinandiku, mar yentho santoshikaranamandi.
And when the sisters were all sitting this side, I thought there were so many sisters. Now when they are all divided, I hardly see any sisters.
Avati sahodarilu, kodimandi matram idigir guchinavu, ekku mandi idigir guchinavaru. Avati, vashavitostara?
No, 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 no. No, I will just ask because, see when we speak from here, when you see all empty, we say, "Oh no, I am speaking and nobody is here to listen." God is speaking the word and nobody is here to listen. So it feels nice when people come in the front, not leaving any space.
Ikannu jushnavudu, kaali sthalal ganpisthe, kaali sthalalu bodisthatu natu unthadu maaku, adhikane kaali sthalal lo koncham guchunte, bhavun. Kaali sthalal lo koncham, avati mudukasthe, bhavun. Rendu mudukrendu, mudukay.
No need, no need, no need to disturb.
Ach, okay, let us, athey do feel the places.
Sit here, sit here. Then you can hear also properly.
Chakkaga vinagala gutarugu idigir guchunte.
Yaapoyi Hindi hai, kya, Hindi valai janthe, isko Hindi, English nahi aathay? Yes, sister, no? Kon sah, kon sah sister, Hindi?
They can understand English also.
They can understand, they can understand, no?
And if they don't understand, then they can tell us anyways, they will follow.
Okay, let us start, it is already late, so we will start, it is okay sister, it is okay, no problem. Shall we start? We will have our prayer.
Rendu, vadibetkundam chinnapradan deskuntam.
Loving holy Father Almighty, gracious Lord, what a great joy it is, Father, to be in the midst of thy children, blood-bath children, Lord, this afternoon.
Prima gala parlokomundana, sarva shaktikalama parlokomundana, thandri, madhyana kalasamulo, pravani priyabidhalu padividanga, ni mandramanu lo cheri, ravaadamanade entho, gopasangathi pravani konnanav.
There is no greater joy than being in thy presence and reading your word, like Father Lord, and understanding, meditating upon your word which thou has given to us, O Lord.
Ni sanidiku chichipravani, vichna vaakymunu, dyaninchip, dapatinchida, nichadivi, pravai la gartan viskunni, grahincha, i, adhiketa kantek goppa santoshman kottled.
Thank you very much, loving Father Lord, for all the dear ones who have come eagerly, Lord, to hear your word and to listen to your voice.
Thandri, mar yentho, aashato, ni svaram vinallani, maat vinallani, ochnapriyabidlandanibattini, konnam stotram chalishtaram.
Thank you, holy Father, that thou has given me and thy servant also the privilege to be here, Lord, among the loved ones, O Lord, right from Sunday, Lord, to minister, Lord, to thy dear ones.
Parlokomundanri, mar y, yaadivaram nuunchi, pravaidanga, ni priyabidhalagu parichari deskutani, idanga marla maaku, naakunu, mani daasunuku, ni vidanga, avkashamadikithin, kaya, ni konnam chalishtaram.
Father, we are not worthy, but Lord, but thy worthiness, O Lord, that was given to us, so that we can stand before you, O Lord.
Thandri, meyemayte, meyadutanilbattakunu, meyberilatilbattakunyogelmukamu, kevalam niyogatha battene, viswastan batten, idigir betkunav.
Father, even as I talk, whatever I speak, Lord, maybe from thee, from thy heavenly throne, heavenly Father, let your word may come into my mouth and I will speak only what you want me to speak, oh Father.
Thandri, pravamari, ni sanilo nilbattaku, yogatali nannu, pravamari, maatlade, prithi maatalonu, ni krupasi massunchi, parlokomundanchi, pravani ve, naakunu, maakunu, ni maatal dayacheyani, vedkutshun.
Whatever comes out of my mouth, Lord, may be edifying, Lord, to the children and also bring glory and honor to thee alone.
Na, notinuvache, prithi maata, pravamari, naa mahimukaranugunnatlikanu, kevalam ni naa mahimukaranugunnatlikanu, prilandarkik, sheemaavudukaranugunnatlikanu, cheymani pradhistina.
Father, hide me behind thy drawers, Lord, and let thy words and let thy mouth be, Lord, my portion, heavenly Father.
Thandri, ni silu chadu, maru parichkuni, pravamari, ni maatle, pravamari, naa bhagamkanu, maandhar bhagunnatlikachey.
Committing everything and this time into your loving hands, we give you all the glory and honor in our this prayer, Lord, with thanksgiving, in Jesus Christ's precious name.
Amalandani, mee, prema gala, daygalasthalapaginshukuntu, samasta ganatha mahima, pravani, ni kummatram aarupistu, ma prabhu maarakshukulu, esu krishthiaka, muli maina, parishuddhanavumnastutinchi, pradhinsvedkuntunam, thandri.
Amen. In the Bible, we have seen, we have many women, of course, all of you who have studied and would have had Bible studies and also sisters' meetings where you recovered all these women in the Bible.
Mar Bible lo unnas, strilunu gurinchina, vartamanaalu, leeda Bible patinalu, Bible adhyanaalu, mar y anekasthalaloo, manekasandarbalo, miru vedigurunchi, dyaninchuntaran, naan kontna.
You would also have studied about various couples in the Bible.
Adhividanga, mar y, jantalanu gurunchu, dhampatlanu gurunchu, miru aneksaralu pattinchuntaran, naan namukunna.
Godly couples who have been used mightily by God.
Mar y, dayavabaktigala, bharayabartalan, anekulunu, devu entho, balanga vaadkunnam, gudam, miru chadivundavach.
So today we are going to see one such couple and that is from the book of Judges.
Irojku gudam, maru moka, dhampatulunnu gurunchu chutam, adhi, nayadpatulagandamulunnu chutam.
Can anyone tell me?
Evarena, chappakalavaru, varuvaru?
Judges.
Nayadpatulagandamul, varuvaru?
A couple.
Dhampatalu, leeda, janta, bharayabartal.
Ah, yes, in Judges thirteen, we have Manohar and his wife.
Avati, mar y, nayadpatulagandam, padhumudavachamulo, mar y, Manohar, thana bharanu gurunchu, manu chutam.
So this thirteenth chapter has twenty-five verses, but we are not going to read all these verses because of lack of time, but as we go along, we will see into the few verses.
Padhumudavachamulu, irivadu vashnalunne, anniyavasham chadukamankundi, atha, koni koni vashnal, maru dyanistundaga, vittinchoosukuthu, bundikeltam.
See, when we see the book of Judges, it is a judge, it is a book where the Lord chastens his people, Jews, and into the hands of the enemies, only to bring them back to him.
Nayadpatulagandamulu, maru gamanachasnu, shumantante, devu thana prajalena, yudalena varne, shikshistu, avidanga, varishttrulunji, vidupistu, varini, tarpeedalu, anagavari, kibuddichepadani, devu, ayadinallu, karalcheshtu, chushtam.
But we find that every time he, they cry unto him, they call unto him, then Lord feels very sorry for them and he raises up a leader to redeem them, he is redeemed and then they are all right for some time, but again they go into idolatry.
Avati, adheshamulo, maru chushadintante, prajalu, avidanga, mar y, tirugubaduchedam, devu varini, shetrule, kapaginchedam, marla, varu devu nik morupetukodam, paschata padam, varipapam visame, devu paschata padi, mar y, varikoruku rakshakunni, leeda, nayadpatni, leepadam, varini, marla, akbaanisattham, shetunjividupinchidam, marla, virupapunlapadipadam, vendaguduka, chakramu, laga, jargadam, chustam.
It is a vicious circle that you will see and you will be knowing this.
Kavati, mekadi, telise, namkontnu, mar y, antaguda, oka chakramalu, oka ra, gunramga, idagada, saikila, jargatam, thamata.
So this is one instance where the children of Israel were given into the hand of the Philistines by God.
Atha, alanti sandarbalo, ikkada, sandarbamundu, ikkada, mar y, israeli prajalu, philistila chethika, apagincheda padda.
For forty years, they were captive under the Philistines, see in verse one.
Padhu devashulochusten, nalupadi samashramalu, varu philistila chethiki, appaginchedu, appagincheda padda.
Yes, so when they were tortured, when they were persecuted by the Philistines, they cried unto the Lord for deliverance.
Phillistila chetha, varyentho, ibbandibadda, kasubadda, var chetha, anagathroka, padda, appudu, var ventene, devu nik morupetukunnavaru.
Again, we find that the heart of the Lord is so loving, is so kind and he doesn't want them to suffer, the children call upon him and he answers them, so he wanted to deliver them out of the hand of the Philistines.
Marla, devu chundandi, varu visame, entho, dayagaligi, varu moranu, vinii, marla, iviru, naabidalekada, naapilalekada, marupetunarani, devu varini, kanikarinchii, marla, philistilas chethulundi, vidupinchite, avachavad.
If you see the Judges, the Lord raises, all as leaders whom the Lord raises, is from the different tribes of Israel.
Nayadpatulagandam, maru chushadlette, aprilara, mar y, prithi teganudi, leeda, prithi gotramudi, varini, rakshinchutaku, oka, nayakkunni, leeda, oka, nayadpatni, devu, ayasamyalu, lebutavacha.
Now, this time, God raises a judge, wants to raise a judge from the tribe of Dan.
Iesandarbamlo, ikkada, danugotramudi, devu ko nayadpatni, lepallani, korunad.
Verse two, we find that.
Rendu, chustam, visyani, aakalamuna, danu vamsasthudunu, joriyapattanashtudunu, aina, manoha, anu, nokadudenu, athani bharaya, godralai, kaanuku leka, undenum.
Yeah, so the tribe of Dan was chosen by God, so that a deliverer can come from that tribe to deliver the Israelites from the hand of the Philistines.
Philistila chethulundi, mar y, israeli prajalu rakshinchutaku, i, sorry, danu vamsasthudalu, leeda, joriyapattam, a, manoha kutumani, devu, erparchunad.
Not that they were a holy tribe, a separated tribe, a sanctified tribe, but they were a tribe which was idolatry.
Var yedu, parishuddhamayna, gotramani, leeda, chala, pavitra maynavarani, prithyakamaynavaru, prithi, prithi, and, prithistinchavannavani, ane, amshamule, ledhikani, varyentho, vigraharadikulayna, gotramchendnavaru.
See in chapter eighteen and verse thirty and thirty-one.
Muppay, muppayadu vashnal, maru chustam, padchamdavacham, nayadpatulagandam, muppay, muppayadushtal, danuyalu, chakkabadina, a, prithi manu, nilipukunirii, moxay manamadunu, gershanu, kumarunaina, yonathanunu, varadunu, dan, varni, kumarunu, a, deshapu, deshamu, cherrapattabadu, varaku, danuyula, gotramunaku, yaajukulay, undiri. Devu ni mandramu, sialo, lo, nunna, dinamulani, tano, varu, meekha, chenchina, prithi manu, nilipukunindiri.
Yes, so the God's house wasn't shallow and yet these people in Dan, tribe of Dan, who were in the northern kingdom, were into idolatry. So from this tribe, God chooses a couple so that a judge can be raised by them.
Adinallu, sialo, devu ni mandramundedi, kavati, akkada, i, danugotra, varu, vireyijisarenta, meekha, chenchina, a, prithi manu, nilipukunipoojistundevad.
We can't understand the choosing of the Lord.
Devu nee, eka, earpartun, maru, addan deskolim.
We may think, why from this idolatry tribe, God is raising somebody?
Vigraharadikulayna, i, gotramudi, devu, enthu, oka, nayadpatni, lepallanukunnadu?
But as you see the genealogy of the Lord, Jesus Christ, in Matthew, chapter one, you will find that there are five women who are from the heathen people, from the heathen tribe, who has been brought into the wings of the God of Israel.
Esu krishthiaka, vamshavali, matheswata, muddachal, maru chustae, ayyidugu, strilunu, a, vamshavalu, devu, chetchbetna, mar y, varandharu, ane jenlu, chendnavare, thana, kumarana, esu krishustuni, i, lokalu, dechthukaku, a, na, rekhalakrindi, ayyidugu, strilanu, vada, chenchunadu, varane jenlu.
Beginning from Rahab.
Rahab, nundimadu, bate.
Tamar.
Tamaru.
Ruth.
Ruthu.
Bathsheba.
Bathsheba.
They have been brought into the family of God, they were outsiders, outside the, them of God, outside the peculiarity, choosing of God as the Jews.
Devu nee, earparchabadina, janangamu, mar y, visheshajanamayna, israeli prajalu, velipattunna, ane jenlina, striluviru.
In Matthew, chapter one, we see, even their names are there, written in the word of God.
Devu ni vaakymulu, matheswata, muddachamulu, varu, perle, saitham, akkada, vamshavalu, prastainchabadam, maru chustam.
So we cannot question the choosing of God. God can choose us from anywhere, but for his glory, he has a purpose for us and he accomplishes that purpose with us.
Thana udeshamu, niravechukunuku, thana mahimakoraku, mar y, devu, evarunaina, ane jenlu, nuundisaitamo, thana earpartalo, pechkuntadu.
So we find that God choosing this couple from this tribe to bring out a judge and who was the judge? What is the name of the judge?
Avati, ivamshamulu, nundu, mar y, oka, nayadpatni, deskram, nayadpati, perinti?
Samson, yes. Samson, we all know about Samson, isn't it?
Samson, maru, maru, andharu, telisinde.
Yes, but the, the special thing about this couple were that they had no children, they were barren.
Ibarayabartale, kunna, mar y, asal sangathintante, mar y, visheshmal sangathintante, mar y, bharaya, godralai, undi.
So we will see about six aspects of this couple and the first one which we see is that ever a barren couple.
Avati, bharayabartale, gurunchi, maru, a, ramshal chustamu, maru, gurushadlette, mar y, vi, pillalu lenivariga, anaga, bharaya, godralai, kaanupleka, undi.
So we find that God chooses a couple who is barren to bring out a judge, she could have chosen somebody else who already had children, isn't it?
Pillalu, unnai, itara, dhampatulunu, itara, talidendula, bharayabartale, devu, erparchukochu, kani, ikkada, pillalu leni, ana, godralga, unnai, i, bharayanu, leeda, vi, dhampatu, devu, erparchunadikra.
There could have been many family, many couple without children also there.
A, 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 vamshamalu, leeda, adinallu, vere, dhampatu, kuundendaavach.
But God would have had some reason for choosing this couple to be the, the parents of Samson.
Atha, i, dhampatulunu, samsonuku, talidendulaga, undaniki, chedaniki, devu nek udeshamundi.
So each of us also, as parents, God has chosen us to give birth, to have children and that is the God's choosing and God's gift to us.
Maru, maru, guada, talidendulamuka, devu, manaku, pillanichnadante, adhi, devu nee, eka, earpartu, devu, oka, udeshamu, kaligi, oka, alochana, sankalpamu, kaligi, alagmalan, jastadu.
So one day, the good news comes to Manohar's wife, we are not told about Manohar's wife's name, only Manohar's name is mentioned, we don't know her name and we don't know how long they were barren.
Mar y, Manohar, bharaya, pirayate, manaku, raibadledu, mar y, var, antakalamunudi, la, godralayundi, pillalaykunnavaru, gudam, manaku, telidu, atha, shubhavata, mottani, Manohar, bharaya, degar, gochindi.
But the meaning of Manohar is rest or consolation.
Manohar, anna, maatakku, arthamu, vishranti, leeda, adarana.
So you know very well, we also have, we also will be having here, or even in the world, we have many infertile couples, no, couple who do not having children.
Pillal leni, mar y, bharayabartalu, anekulunu, manu, maru, degar, chustam, baidalokamulu, guada, chustuntam.
Yeah, Abraham and Sarah.
Abraham, Sarah, lunnu.
Rebecca, Isaac.
Rebecca, Isaacu.
Rachel, Jacob.
Yakobu, Rahelu.
So many, yeah, Hana, Hannah.
Hannah, Anna, undi.
Yeah, so all of them were barren, but later on, when they cried unto Lord, God, remember them and give them a child.
Kavati, vilandaru, mar y, pillalaka, godralayuntiri, aynanu, devu, morpetkunabudu, devu, var, pillananu, grahinshad.
But what would have been the condition of a couple who does not have a child?
Atha, pillalu leni, dhampatula, paristithela, gunthadi.
It is everyday life we see, isn't it?
Anudina, jeevtham, maru, chustuntam, kada?
How are they treated in society?
Samajamlo, varni, ala, chustaru.
They are looked upon in shame.
Varni, siggutodustaru.
They are reproached.
And, dushistaru.
Usually, that lady will be made to cry.
Saaja janga, mar y, bharani, bhaag edupistaru, leeda, strini, bhaag edupistaru.
Yes, mother-in-law, sister-in-law, all the in-laws will say something and say, and then make that child, that woman to cry.
Atthalu, mar y, gamigita, bandhulu, vachutala, varandharu, guada, yedpochendhar, edupistaru.
In short, that life of that woman will be miserable.
Kluttanga, oka, maatla, chappalante, a, striyoka, jeevtham, entho, dharbhagam, gunthadi, dayaniyam, gunthadi.
Yes, and sometimes, if the husband is considerate, if the husband is kind, he will be consoling the wife, like Elkana, consolled Hannah, right?
Elkana, idanga, annanu, odaristu, manchi maatal chaptu, dayagalina maatal, palikinadu, konisaru, mar y, bhar, bharthalena, varu, a, godralena, bharalu, kodiga, adaristavuntar.
Yeah, but otherwise, they will also be able to, they will also listen to the parents and many of them, as you know, in day-to-day life, they, if they don't, if one, even in the Bible, as Hannah, she did not have a child, so what did Elkana do? He married another woman, isn't it, Pannaaya, so she got child, children and she was also nagging for Hannah.
Alalainatle, ette, matshurandi, bharthalu, guada, bharali, vedinchavargana, untar, rathamamala, valam, leeda, valateldanu, maatal, veni, elkana, visamulu, maru, chustae, mar y, Hannah, kippilalayani, maru, perinand, jaskunadu.
Yeah, so the shame of not having a child, the reproach of not having a child, all these things would have played upon them.
Kavati, pillalu leni, a, paristithi, entho, siggukaramganu, entho, dushanakaramganu, andharu, nindalu, ves, paristithika, gunthadi.
But we find that they did not go and do anything which was against the will of God.
Atha, devu nee, chiththani, ki, virodhamga, vetrekkamga, viravaru, chesinatum, maru, chudam.
We find Abraham and Sarah, they went against the will of God and Sarah, and because of that, they had a flesh, isn't it, they brought out Ishmael, the son of the flesh.
Shara Abraham, lo, visamulu, maru, chustae, mar y, shara, kodiga, devu, chiththani, leeda, devu, agnuk, vetrekkamga, velinatukuchisi, shereeramayna, Ishmael, ni, varu, avidanga, teeskochinat, maru, chustam.
Yeah, Rachel was very demanding to her husband Jacob, so much so that he got angry on her.
Avati, Rahel, ette, mar y, enthagano, tondrapettindi, pillalaviyshamulu, entantinka, Yakobu, ku, kupumachenta, tha, nu, kalavrit.
Elkana would have been pressurized so much so that he had to remar, that he had to marry somebody else.
Elkana, guada, bhaaga, otthuri, dechuntavach, andhike, bhausha, mar y, inkuka, strini, pele, jaskunadaina.
But we don't see any such things from this couple.
Atha, i, dhamputala, visamulu, ilanti, e, visam, maru, chudamu.
They would have left it to the will of God, they waited patiently for the Lord's will to be done in their lives.
Devu nee, samayam korukunu, devu nee, chiththamu, anaga, devu, epri jastha, epri, annat, devu nee, hastaliku, vidichpettina, kavati, chustam, i, paristithini.
So one of the things that we have to learn from this is to wait patiently for the Lord's timing, in his time, the Lord will give what he wants us to give us.
Devu, e, mivalanukunnadu, epriivalanukuntadu, watni, devu, tanasam, listadu, annani, maru, guada, gutinchii, devu nee, hastaliku, vidichpettala, visyani, dindaram, managekochu.
Seeking the Lord's will in this matter, finding the Lord's will in this matter, doing the Lord's will, accepting the Lord's will, is what he desires of us.
Mar y, devu nee, chiththani, veta kadamu, devu nee, chiththam, koruku, eduruchudamu, devu nee, chiththani, adigii, maru, mundadu, vedamana, dinnuchu, managekochu.
If it is the Lord's will, he will give us a child, if it is not the Lord's will, he will not give us a child.
Devu nee, chiththam, manu, undi, pillalivali, nee, devu, undi, kashtangistadu, kola, devu, earpartla, leda, kondi, a, na, ivadana, guada, maru, opkavali.
As believers, we have to accept the Lord's will.
Viswastlamga, maru, devu nee, chiththamunu, suikarinchali, angikarinchali.
But of course, in those days, Elkana and all didn't have any other means of treatment to go and find out and whether they can take another treatment and get a child.
Atha, adinallu, mar y, ankha, Elkana, kumar, thana bharaya, anna, kure, edana, vaidhamu, ches, edana, chay, pillalu, budde, la, cheskunavana, alanti, vasatulu, earpart, led.
This type, this, these days, we have so many means to go to the doctors and to do so many procedures and to get a child.
Idinallu, ette, mar y, vaidarangamulu, maru, anekamayna, earpartlu, anekamayna, vesulubatlu, nunai, mandul, deskuntam, kodira, kamayna, treatment, deskuntam, tarada, pillalikantar.
It is not wrong by itself, but what is the Lord's will for us, what is the Lord, did you find the Lord's will, did you seek the Lord's will before you take this proper step?
Alanti, treatment, gani, vaidham, teesukodamalu, topundana, naan antal, ledhikani, alanti, teesukavala, leeda, anna, visamulu, maru, mundadu, vedaniki, idhi, devu nee, chiththama, i, devu, earpartla, unda, leeda, annadi, kanukkun, jastam, manchadi.
We must be able to face the situation with the help of the Lord.
Prabhu, sahayamutho, a, parisidhi, edurukunavidanga, maru, undal.
Example is my own son, he had for seven years, he didn't have a child and they tried, but then after that, they left it to the will of the Lord, they said, "Mommy, we are not going to..."
Udaanaku, naa koduke, unnadu, mar y, var, vivahamai, yedu samachralu, var, prathinicharu, yedu samachrala, pillalu, var, ikki, kaaledu, mommy, maru, game, trychemu, devu nee, chiththanki, odleshta, maru, var, opkunadu.
One day, he said, "Mommy, we got a good news, after seven years."
Yedu samachraltharata, mar y, mommy, good news, ani, naa koduku, jeped.
And the Lord, and he said that my wife has conceived and just pray.
Mar y, naa bharayakarbam, darinchindi, ani, thano, cheped, pradhinsman.
I said, "What did you do?"
Nu, e, jesevaya, naadigan.
He said, "Nothing, we just prayed, we waited for God's will, if it was his will to give us a child, we will accept it, if it was not his will also, we will remain as we are."
Eemi, chale, dammanenu, mar y, me, pradhana, jaskutunam, devu nee, chiththamalu, undte, makistad, namkunam, leeda, ante, leda, namkunam, alagay, nanad.
It made me very happy to know that children also follow what is the Lord's will.
Devu nee, chiththam, e, mayunna, annadi, maru, pillalu, netzkodamu, entho, santoshikaramani, visam.
So this would have honored the Lord, the patience of Manohar and his wife, the faith, that trust that they had in the Lord, would have made the God think that this is a right couple for, to be the parents of Samson.
Mar y, Manohar, thana, bharaya, ku, varidharu, kaligana, sahanamu, devu nee, var, kuna, viswastamu, namkamu, nu, batti, devu, bhausha, namkonndavachu, viru, naa, samayam koruku, naa, chiththam koruku, viru, naa, earpart koru, eduruchustanu, kavati, viridwarani, oka, nayadpatni, mar y, lebutanani, bhausha, prabhu, namkonndavachu.
So also, they would have prayed to the Lord for a child.
Antega, varu, devu, mar y, bidde koru, pradhinchindavach.
So what we know from this is, we have to be patiently waiting for the Lord to do his will in our lives and same time pray and cry unto the Lord.
Maru, guada, dinnu visam, neechkochu, nintante, prabhu sanilu, maru, pradhansedam, prabhu, samayam koruku, maru, eduruchudam.
Secondly, we see that this couple was to be set apart or holy for the Lord.
Rendu, avadiga, maru, chushadlette, viru, prabhu koru, tamunutavu, prithyaka, parichkunavadu, unnaru.
So one day, when Manohar and his wife were in the, maybe in the fields working, wife was alone, Manohar was elsewhere, we find that the angel of the Lord appears to his wife.
Avati, oka, roj.
Verse three.
A, moodavacham, maru, chushadlette, mar y, oka, roj, varu, polamula, panjaskuntam, Manohar, vere, degar, unnadu, bharaya, oka, degar, undi, kavati, devu, devu nee, dutha, mar y, a, stri, ki, prithyak, shemai, idigo, ni, godralavu, ni, kaanuku, leka, poyenu, atha, ni, garbavetve, kumani, kandavanna, vartha, dutha, deskochunadu.
So what a great news, a surprising news, this woman would have got, should have been so wondering what is happening to her.
Chundandi, godralayne, stri, ki, akasmatu, dutha, ochi, ni, garbavetvata, ni, kumani, kantavanna, vartha, entho, goppa, vartha, entho, santoshikaramayna, vartha, ikav, ananda, nik, avudal, undakpoyendavach.
Such news, we would be doubting, we would not want to believe, how can that be, that is the first thing that will come into our mind.
Idhi, etlasadhya, mu, ali, mota-mota, a, anumana, mostadi, a, ashram, guada, kalikutadi, bayam, guada, estadi.
And who is this man who is coming and telling me that I will have this child?
I, yevaro, anna, guada, oka, bayam, gunthadi.
Yeah, so and one way, she would have been very happy, another way, she would have been frightened, should not know what is this, that is happening to her.
Okavidanga, chushadlette, ame, entho, santosham, ananda, kaligundavachu, inkavidanga, i, vektia, varu, idhi, enthu, nakochi, la, jerutunana, bayam, guada, bhausha, ame, kaligundavach.
But we find that God had chosen this insignificant couple, this unknown couple, to fulfill his sovereign plan for his people, Israel.
Avati, e, matram, guthimpuleni, pramukhiteleni, anaga, samajamlu, ilanti, adarana leni, i, kutumbani, i, dhamputulunu, devu, earparchkuni, thana, prajal, israeli, vidupinchutaku, oka, nayadpatni, viridwarak, teeskuralanu, devu, deshinshad.
So like Mary, like Zachariah, she also received the divine pronouncement that she will be conceiving.
Mar y, a, zacharale, ku, evidanga, nette, mundugane, telpavadintho, viri, visamulu, guada, mundugane, virikich, chappavadinthi.
So, but there was one condition on which she will be conceiving.
Atha, a, me, garbavetve, kumani, kanadam, mansthe, kani, oka, shartumida, avidanga, kantundan, jepna.
In verse four.
Naalga, vachamulo, kavati, ni, u, jagrataga, undi, draksharasamune, gani, madhyamune, gani, traga, kundumu, appavitra mayna, dini, na, nu, tina, kundumu.
What was that instruction, that she had to keep herself separated and sanctified for the child to be born?
Mar y, bidde, janminchenta, varaku, guada, mar y, madhyamune, gani, avitra, mayna, e, di, guada, tina, kunda, anaga, prithyakam, undala, a, par, pavitra, undala, ni, chappavartundu.
And why, because the son that she had to conceive, son that she had to bear, would be a son who should be a separated child for the Lord and Nazareth.
Naalga, vashamulu, maru, chushadlette, mar y, a, bidde, enthu, kala, enthu, kala, pavitra, kala, undal, ante, a, puttaboye, bidde, devu nee, ki, naa, jeeru, cheyabadina, vaadi, anundu.
The child had to be holy right from the time that he was conceived from the mother's womb.
A, bidde, garbavuna, puttinadi, modulikoni, devu nee, ki, naa, jeeru, cheyavanna, vaadi.
Numbers six, one to eight, we find that, the rules of the Nazareth.
Mar y, a, vacham, moditi, vashnallo, naa, jeeru, cheyavadina, a, vektini, gurunchina, niyamalu, maru, akkada, chadutama.
Yes, we see the laws that the Lord has given to Moses about the Nazareth, number six, one to eight.
Shemichand, sankyaakadham, a, vacham.
Number six.
Sankyaakadham, a, vacham, moditi, vashnallo, mar y, naa, jeeru, cheyavanna, vektii, eemi, chayali, eemi, chay, gudu, anna, niyamani, bandhali, gurunchina, vyavaru, maru, akkada, chadutama.
Yes, no, don't read, you, what we see is, see the... What we see is, see the verse four.
नालग वच्चुन्नलो।
Verse three, four and five, we can read.
नालगु, ऐदु, आर, मुड़ू नालग ऐदु वच्चनल चौथाम, द्राक्षरसपु चिरकनयनु, मध्यपु चिरकनयनु त्रागवलदु, ए द्राक्षरसमुनयनु त्रागवलदु, पच्चिविगानी, एंडिनविगानी, द्राक्षापण्डु तीनवलदु, आइथे प्रत्येकमुगानुंडु, तिनमुलन्यु, पच्चिकायले गानी, पाइत्तोले गानी, द्राक्षावल्लिनु पुट्टिनद, एधि उत्तिनवलदु, अदरु नाजीरु, नाजीरगुटकु मुकुकुनिन तिनमुलन्यतुलो, मंगलकत्यतनी तलमिदा वेयवलदु, अदरु यहोवाकु तनुतानु प्रत्येकिंचुकुन्न तिनमुल निरवेर, वारकु अदरु प्रतिष्ठितुडाई, तनतलवेंट्रुकल्नु एदुगनीयवलिनु।
Verse six also.
आरवज्यम कुड़ा, अदरु यहोवाकु प्रत्येकमुगानुंडु तिनमुलन्यतुलो, ए शवमुनु मुट्टवलदु।
Yes, so till eight, there are lots. So one thing is that the child that is to be born is wholly right from the womb and thus so the mother also should not take anything of wine or she should not eat any unclean thing and she should be separate for the Lord.
प्रभुकरुकु नाजीरु चेयबट्टमंटे, मारी आ बिड्डा गर्बम पुट्टिनद मोदलु, अला मारी द्राक्षरसमुट्टा गुड़दु, शवमुट्टा गुड़दु, अपवित्रमनी गुड़दु, मंगलकत्यपड़गुड़दु, अन्नी गुड़ा विवरालु।
The child's hair should not be cut and the child should not come in front of any dead person or any dead thing.
तलमिदा मंगलकत्य वेय गुड़दु, मारी शवमुल मुट्टा गुड़दु अन्ना गुड़ा अकड़म छुस्तुनाम।
So that was the condition which was given to Manohwa's wife when she was conceiving.
आमे मारी गर्बमुतो उन्न दिनालो, आमे क्यूबुन्न शरतु बिड्डनु गुरिंची विधंगा उंदी।
So this is very important even for us as mothers who are pregnant. When we conceive, we have to keep ourselves holy for the Lord and not get involved in all the worldly things. As brother was telling yesterday during the child dedication, that whatever the mother does during pregnancy does affect the child.
ईदि मनकु कुड़ा एन्टन वर्तिस्तुन अंडी, एन्दुकनगा मारी गर्बमुतो उन्न स्त्रीलु, मारी अपवित्रमयन एधि कुड़ा, अनगा लोकानुसारम एधि कुड़ा चेय गुड़दु, नेयर तिनमु, मारी चाइल्ड डिडिकेशन टाइमलो गुड़ा, मारी अन्न चेप्पनर गादेपका वटी, अलागु तल्ली गर्बमुलो उन्न पड़नुंडी, पिल्लल विष्म मे जागरत वाइंचल।
When that child is conceived itself, we should start thanking the Lord for the child.
बिड्डा गर्बमुलो पडिनदी मोदलु, देवुनिकी स्तुतुलु वंदनालु चलिस्ताउंडाली तल्ली।
From the child is in the womb itself, start praying for the child and pray as if the child is praying from the womb.
तल्ली गर्बमुलो उन्न पड़नुंडे, तल्ली बिड्डा प्रार्धिंचिनटुलुगा, तल्ली बिड्डकरुक तल्ली प्रार्धना जेस्तुंडाल।
Pray for the life of the child when it will be born.
बिड्डा ओका जीवितमकरुकु पुट्टिन्तराता, दालकरुक प्रार्धिंचली तल्ली।
Pray and thank the Lord for the health that the Lord has given during the time that the mother is carrying the child.
मारी नेललु निडुतुन्नगा, गर्बमुलो तल्ली बिड्डनु मोस्तुन्नगा, आ बिड्डा ओका आरोग्यमकरुकु, तल्ली प्रार्धिस्तुंडाली, मारी प्रभुनाराधिस्तुंडाल।
So that means the grace of the Lord has to be upon the mother and the child when they are conceived.
अनगा वारु गर्बम दरिंचनपुडु, देवुनी नुंडी, आयना ओका किरणालु गर्बमिदा पड़नटु, अजूस्कॉल।
They should be covered by the prayers of the saints, they should be covered with the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ.
प्रवनेश्वर क्रिस्तोका रक्तमुचेतनु, मारी परिषदला प्रार्धना चेता, बिड्डनु कप्पितुन्नटु कुणा।
It's very important that this is especially with us believers because the child has been raised up in the house of the Lord and for the Lord.
देवुनी इंटलो, देवुनी, आ बिड्डा एदुगुनटुलु, देवुनु कोरकु बिड्डा एदुगुनटुलु, गर्बमुलो उन्नपुनुंचे, ईदि तल्ली पाटिंचन एन्टो प्रामुख्यमयन नदी।
So, Manohwa's wife had to submit and do the will of the God when she had to conceive.
आमे गर्बम दरिंचनपुडु, मारी मनोवा भार्या, वी टन्निटिकी तनुतानु अपगिंच्कुन्स ओकः वल्लस छिनी।
It is very difficult for a person to submit, to obey.
लोबडुतकु अपगिंच्कुणडम, अन्नदी ओकः व्यक्तिकी चालकस्तम।
To surrender to God's commands.
देवुनी आग्नलकु समर्पिंच्कुणडम चालकस्तम।
We also have so many commandments in the Bible, but do we obey, do we submit, do we surrender? No.
बाइबिललो एन्नो आग्नल मनक युवर्डाय, कानी वाट अन्निटिकी मनम, मलम अपगिंच्कुटुनाम, वाट्नी पाटिस्तुनाम, वाटिकी समर्पिंच्कुन्न विदेध चुपिस्तुनाम, चेट्ले।
But most of all, what we should understand from this is that we should be obeying the word of God and we should be willing to submit and surrender our lives to the word of God.
परी देवुनी वाक्यानिकी मनम विदेध चुपिंचली, मारी देवुनी वाक्यानिकु मनम अपगिंच्काली, समर्पिंच्काली।
Yes, and we find that Manohwa's wife, when she got this news, she did not react like Sarah. What did Sarah do? She laughed and she doubted and she said, "And this old age will I get a child?"
तरवता मनोवा भार्या इकड़ा छुस्ते, देवु दुदवची, मारी ई वर्तमानम इच्चनपुडु, शारा लागतानु वेंटने प्रतिस्पन्दिंचलेदु, लेदा शारा लागा नवेसी रेप्राइतले, कादल अन्नाट्ला, अनुमानम संदेहमु, मारी मनोवा भार्या इकड़ा व्यक्त परिचनटु छुड़म।
What did she do?
आमे एन जिसनकड़ा?
She ran and told her husband.
आमे पर्गेत्तुकुनि पोई, तन भर्तकु जप्पिनी वार्ता।
So thirdly, we find this, the relationship between the husband and the wife.
मुड़ोदिका मनम इकड़ा छुस्नेटले ते, भार्या भर्तला मध्युंडे सम्बंधम।
See in verse six and verse, Dejus thirteen, verse six and verse...
आरवज्यम चुरंडी, आस्त्री तन पेनिमिटियोदकु वच्ची, दायवजन डोकुनायदकु वच्चनु, अतन रूपम देवु दुतर, रूपमुनु पोलिनदे, मिक्कीली बीकरमगा उंडनु, अदरु एकड़नुंडी वच्चनु नैन अडुगलेदु, अदरु तन पीरुनातो चप्पलेदु।
Yes, and again in verse ten.
माला पद वच्चुन्नु गुड़ा, आसमयमुना आमे पेनिमिटियना मनोवा आमे उद्दलेदुगनुका, आस्त्री तरगापर्गेत्ती, आनाडुनायदकु वच्चिना पुरुषुडु, नाकनाबडिननी, अतन तो चप्पनो।
So what do we learn from this?
चुरंडी नेचकुटमंडी मनम।
She did not keep the prophecy or she did not keep the good news to herself, but she ran and shared it with her husband.
चुरंडी प्रवच्चनमुगानी, ई शुभवच्चनमुगानी, मनोवा भार्या तन देकर वेट्कोलेदु, आमे पर्गेत्तुपोइंदी, तन पेनिमिटिकी चप्पिंदी।
She was open, she was transparent.
अंतेतानु मारी पारदर्शकंगा उंदी, आम अंदरकी कनाबडेट्टगने उंदी।
She wanted to share her experience of joy and this good news with her husband.
संतोषमु तन अनुभविंचिनी, मर्तुतो पंचुकुनी।
Her husband naturally would have been her companion in her sorrow, in her distress. When people were approaching her, when people were telling something to her, her husband would have been very understanding and comforting to her. So she would have naturally wanted to run and share this good news to him.
तानु कोड्रालगा उन्न दिनालो, पडिना, आ वेदना, बादा, दूषणा, निंदा, वाट अन्निटि विष्णलो, भावशा मनोवा, आमने एन्टो अद्दंजेस्कुनी, मंची साचरुनिगा, मंची स्नेहतुनिगा अद्दंजेस्कुने ओकः व्यक्तिगा उन्नदके कावलो, मारी पर्गेत्तुकुंडेलिंदी, ई संतोषकरम शुभवच्चमानमु, आयनकु चप्परानिकी स्टप्पडिंदी।
She must have, he must have been a person who had accepted his wife in this condition.
ई परिस्थितिलो, मनोवा तना भार्यनु, आमे एट्टुंडे अलागे, तन स्वीकरिंचनाड।
So, what is, when we look into in the light of this, how are we with our husbands?
ई वेलुगुलो मनम छुस्ते, मनमु मना भर्तलतो एलागुन्नामु अन्नदी परिचेस्को।
As wives, we are supposed to, we are expected to share everything with our husbands, isn't it?
भार्यलमुगा, भर्तलतो, मनमु, मारी अन्नी गुड़ा वार्तो पंचुक्काली, अन्ना आश्चर्यिंडाल।
We are expected to be open and transparent to them.
अंतेकादु वारीकी अन्नी तिलपेवारम्गा मनम उंदाली, वारी देकर पारदर्शकंगा उंदालनदी कोरबडतुन इकड़ा।
Many times do we do that?
चालसालु मनम अजेस्तन्म?
Yes, when regarding the children, we don't want to tell anything to the father.
मुखिंगा पिल्लल विष्मलो, पिल्लल विष्मलो, मारी कुन्नी तंडुलक जपम।
So otherwise the children will get upset or the children will get shouted at me, so I will not tell.
पिल्ललु मारनामी दारुस्तारु, नामी दाकोपुमायतरनी, पिल्लल विष्मलो कुन्नी संगतुलु, मारी भर्तकु जपम।
Or if you tell something about the child to the father, the father will beat them.
ओकः अला पिल्लल गुरिंची, वाल नानक जप्ते, वाल नान्ना वारु वच्ची कोरताडनी गुड़ा, कुन्नी जपम मनम।
So we don't want to tell, we hide.
मारो चप्पकुणडा दाचपेटेस्ताम।
But is that doing any good?
मारा देव एमयना मेल जिस्तुंदा?
Will that do good to the child?
अदि पिल्ललके एमयना मेल जिस्तुंदा?
No.
चेद।
Together, the father and the mother have to be concerned about the child in rearing up and bringing up the child.
पिल्लल निमरी पेंचे विष्मलो, पिल्लल पोषणलो, तल्ली तंड्री, इदरु गुड़ा समानमयना पात्रु पोषिंचली।
God has given equal responsibilities to the father and to the mother to rear up the child.
तंड्रिकी, तल्लिकिनी, इदरिकी गुड़ा, देवु दु समान भादते निच्छनाडु, पिल्लल निपेंचे विष्मलो।
Many times it happens that the mothers protect the child so much that later on, when they go out of hand, they don't know what to do and the children are a menace to the family and brings shame to the family.
चालसंदर्भालो, पिल्ललु, मारी चेसेवी, तंडुलकु चप्परु, आरंभमुलो, तरवता चेदाटुपेन तरवता, इनके ई चेसेदे विलेका, अप्पुडु इदरु, मारी पिल्लल विष्मलो एन्टो बाधबड्तर, इनके पिल्लल एन्टो नष्टपोत्तरु, कुड़ुमुल एन्टो, मारी दुक्कमु आशांति।
Yes, so we learn from this that she was willing and she ran to her husband to share the good news to him.
कावटी इकड़ा मनम छुस्नेटले ते, मनोवा भार्या विष्मलो, आमे पर्गेत्तुकुनि पेनिमिटिकी, मारी ई विष्णमु, तेलपडानिके एन्टो सिस्टमगा उंदी।
She also told them about the condition in which she has to conceive this child.
अंतेकादु आमेकु ए शरत आते युवर्डिंदो, गर्बमुन पडिन, बिड्डा पुट्टिनद मोदल एलागुंडाली, आ विवरालु गुड़ा जप्पिंदी।
Yes, so then we find that Manohwa is not able to accept this because he wants to have this experience by himself.
तरवता मनम कम्निस्ते, मनोवा, मारी दिनी वेंटने स्वीकरिंचलेदु, तनकु कुड़ा ई विष्णलु अनुभवपुरुकंगा तेलपाल, तेलवाली अनुकुणाड।
Yes, so we find that he asks the Lord in verse eight. He asks the Lord to send that person again so that he can see him and hear from him the good news again.
मारी ई शुभवार्तनु, तानु कुड़ा नेरुगा विनालनी, मत्तो एन्मिदोच्चुन्नलो, अंदुकु मनोवा ना प्रभभ, निव पंपिन दायवजननु, मरलामायदकु वच्ची, उट्टबोव आ बिड्डमेम, एमि चेय वल्लो, दानिनी माकु नेयर्पुनटु दयचे मनी, यहोवानु वेडुकुने, नु वेडुकुनगा।
Yes, so we find that they were really a godly couple and that's the reason why they both go to the Lord.
चुर्णी वरु निजमुगाने इन्तो भक्तिगला भार्यवार्तलिगा दंपतलिगा इकड़ुन्नत्त जुस्तम अन्तिके मनोवा मरलादेवुनु वेडुकुन्नत्त प्रार्थिंचनाड
See what Manova asks the Lord in verse eight.
इन्मिदोच्छमलो मरि मनोवा एम अडुकुन्नत्त चुर्णी नाप्रभ्य निव पंपिना दायवजननु मरलामायदकु वच्ची उटबोवा बिट्टकु म्यम्य एमि चेवलनो दानिनी माकु नेर्पुनाट्लु दयचे मनि यहोवानु वेडुकोनगा
Yes, so what does Manova ask? Teach us how to bring up this child for you.
मी उटबोवा बिट्टनु म्यम्य एमि चाली मी यलागु पेंचाली माकु नेर्पुनाट्लु
They have not, she has not yet conceived.
इन्का मे गर्वम दरिंचलेदक आसमयनकी
She has, they only received the word from the Lord.
प्रभुनुच्चि देवुनु दम माटमात्रम पोनिन्न नंते
And she has these conditions from the Lord.
प्रभुनुंडी ई शरतलु अनि तेलस्कुन्दी
But here we find that the willingness of the parents to accept this condition.
ई शरतलुनु वरु उपुकुन्नत्तलु वरि इष्टमुनु इदरु तलिदंडलिगा वरि इष्टमुन एला चुपिस्तनर
To come under the commandment of the Lord.
अन्गा देवुन्योका आग्नलकिंदिकु मे मुस्तामन जप्तनर वरु
And we find that they fully trusted the Lord to fulfill this promise.
ई वाक्तानमुनु वरि विषयमलो नेरवेर चुटलो मरि देवुरिश्न वाक्तानानि वरु सम्पूनंगा नम्मिनारु विश्वासमुन्छन
And the most important thing is that they asked how they should bring up the child for the Lord.
अन्निटिकंटे प्रामुक्कन विषयम इन्तरंटे बिड्डा विषयमलो एमि चाली दयच माकु नेर्पुनाट्लु दयचे मनि प्रार्थिंचनाड
See what they ask, teach us what we shall do to the child.
एम एमि चेवलनो दानिनी माकु नेर्पुनाट्लु
See in verse twelve also.
अन्निदोच्छमल गुड़ा मनुचुस्तम अन्तुक मनोवा कावुना नी माटनेर वेरुन अप्पुरु आ बिट्ट एट्टीवाड़गुनो अदरु चेयवलिश्न कार्यम्यम्मितो तेलुकु मनि मनविचयगा
What a great thing that parents are asking the Lord how they should bring up the child and what they are going to do with the child.
मरि बिट्टनु एमि चाली बिट्ट एट्टीवाड़गुनो एम एमि चाली वन्नी कुड़ा चुर्णी तलिदंडलिगा इन्ता भयभक्तलिगलिकु देवुन अडुकुन्नर
How many of us ask the Lord about our children?
मना पिल्लल विषयमलो मनम मनमले इन्तमंदीला अडुकुन्न
Have you ever gone to the Lord and said, "Lord, teach me, help me to bring up this child in your ways"?
प्रभाव नी मार्गमलो ई बिट्टनु ई ना बिट्टनु मरि नड्डिंचुनाट्लु नेर्पुनाट्लु नाक सायमुच्चन पुराडियम
We thank the Lord for the child, we thank the Lord for the growth, we thank the Lord for the development, we thank everything. But how we should bring up the children in the ways of the Lord, do we ask them?
मरि बिट्टनु बिट्टकोरकु ले बिट्ट इच्छिनंदुकु मंद्राचलिस्तम बिट्टक एदुगुदलकोरकु बिट्टक चादु ले मिगितान गुड़ा उड्डुतम कानि नीकोरकु म्यम्य बिट्टनु एन चाली अधिमाकु नेपिंचंडी अनि मनम पुराडियम
Each child given to us is precious, each child is special and each child is a gift of God.
प्रति बिट्टकुड़ा देवुरिश्न प्रति बिट्टकुड़ा मनकु मरा मूलमेनवारु प्रामुक्कमेनवारु अन्तेका इन्तो विलवेनवार
Each child belongs to him.
प्रति बिट्टकुड़ा देवुनिकी चेन्नवारे
And we are lent that child to take care on behalf of God.
देवुनी पक्षमुना बिट्टल विषयमय जागरत वायनचुटकु देवुड़ मनकु बिट्टल अरुविच्छनाटु
So if God has given us a child, he thinks that we are the best parents to take care of that child.
देवुड़ मनकु चुर्णा बिट्टल निच्छनाडंटे आ बिट्टल परियवेक्षण मनमे चक्का को चुस्कोगलमु अन अनुकुनिच्छन
He could have given that child to anybody else.
इकुडु मना बिट्टली वेहरालु कुड़िवच्चु
But he said, "No, this two, this couple is the best for this child, so I'll give them this child."
ई दंपतुलकु ई पलाना बिट्टन निस्तन्नानु अनि यवरी बिट्टल आ दंपतलिकी इच्छनाड प्रभु
So when we get children, we have to really thank the Lord because we are special. God has chosen us to be parents for that child.
आ बिट्टकु तलिदंडलिगा उन्डुटकु देवुड़ मलेर्पच्कुन्नत्त आ बिट्ट प्रत्येकमेनवारु पत्येकमेन बिट्टकाबट्टे देवुड़ वानु मनकिच्छन
So as God has given us, the child has been lent by God, we have to also take the responsibility of taking care of the child in a very responsible way and in a godly manner and to raise up the child for the Lord.
देवुड़ मनकु बिट्टलनु पत्येकमेन विषयमलो ओका अरुव अपुकिच्छनाट्लु वरि विषयमय परियवेक्षण जागरत कलिगुण्डाली इच्छनाड काबट्टी मनमु कुड़ा अन्तेबाधितगा अन्तेबारमुतो वरिनी देवुनु कोरकु पेंचे विषयमले जागरत दिसकोल
Our responsibility as parents is to take care of the child physically, mentally and spiritually.
तलिदंडलिगा मनु दिसकोल्स बाधित इन्तरंटे पिल्लल एका बाउथिकारोग्यमु मानसिकारोग्यमु आध्यात्मिकारोग्य
There should be a balance in the growth of the child.
अन्गा ई बिट्ट यदिके विषयमलो विटन्निति विट्रे विषयलो समानंगा समतुल्यत्लु चुस्कोल
A child if it's not able to walk even at first or even in the first year of his life or second year of his life, parents will be worried.
मरि बिट्ट ओका समस्त्रम रेंडु समस्त्रल उस्तुन्डगा इन्का नडवट्ले गंटे तलिदंडलिगा वेंटने चिन्ता जस्तर
If a child is not able to respond to the parents, not able to see, not able to hear, parents will be worried.
मरि बिट्टलु चूड़लेकपोइना एदा शब्दालकु विनलेकपोइना वर वेंटने प्रतिस्पन्दिंचलेकपोते वेंटर तलिदंडलिगा बाधबढतर चिन्ता जस्तर
Yes, so just like that, in the spiritual life also, if the child is not nurtured and brought up in the ways of the Lord, in the house of the Lord, we should be worried.
कबट अदेवितंगा आध्यात्मिकंगा आत्मियंगा कुड़ा चुर्णी मना बिट्टलु देवुनी इन्टलो देवुनी वाक्यानुसारंगा वर यदगतलेडंटे वेंटने मनमु मिगिताविषयले इन्तचिन्तुन्न मिकड़ु अन्तेचिन्ता कलिगुण्डाल
That is why even brother was mentioning yesterday.
अन्तिका निन्नु कुड़ा ब्रदर मे चप्पनाड
Right from the small age, we should be bringing the child to the house of the Lord.
चिन्नतनमुनुंडे पिल्लल नी देवुनिंटिकु मनम दिसकोस्तु उन्डाली
They will make noise, they will be running around here and there.
वरु अपर अलर्ज यस्तरु अटिडु परिगेटु तर उठ्तर अन्कोणी
But as long as they don't disturb the others and distract the others, it's okay, we can keep them in the side.
अबट इमरी विपरीतंगा अलर्ज यशिव अंदर नी कलर बेडी डिस्टर्ब जैसे वकुंडा चुस्कुंडा चाल
They should get acclimatized to the house of God.
देवुनिंटिकी वर्नी अलवाट्याल
They should be able to, as long as they can understand, when they can understand, they should be able to be sitting in the Sunday school.
वरला कर्तमय इन्तो वरुकु वरला अन्तर्दमय इत्यंतगा मरि संडे स्कूललु वरु कुच्चोबेटाल
Many children, many mothers, even in our church, "Why don't you come to church?" "No, my child will disturb so much, my child doesn't sit properly, she will run here and there." So they don't stop. So because of the child, the parents also don't come.
चुर्णी अनेक संदर्भालो मरि पिल्लल बाग अलर्ज यस्तरंडी बाग एडस्तरु एडबिस्तरु बाग कलर डिस्टर्ब यस्तरंजप्पी पिल्लल दिसकरारु म्यम अडिकते कुड़ा इलागु उन्तदनी चप्पी दिसकरारु पिल्लल रानि काननबट्टे मरि तलिललु गुड़ा रावटले मंद्रं
And what is a loss?
चुर्णी नष्टमु इन्टी
Spiritual laws for the parents.
तलिदंडलिगा आत्मेनष्टम
Spiritual laws for the child.
पिल्ललकुड़ा चुर्णी आत्मेवन नष्टम
We have been growing up in the church, in the house of God, but our children are deprived of that knowledge.
मनमायते मरि देवुनिंटलो परिगयमु कानि मना पिल्ललो देवुनिंटलो परिगतलेदु
So it's very important for us to be bringing the child right from the time that they are born. Many children even back home in Patmos, one couple was there, "Why don't you bring your child, why don't you come?" "No, no, she'll be making a lot of noise, she'll cry, then I have to get up and go" and so many excuses.
मरि चिन्ना बिट्टलु पुट्टिना वेंटने पुट्टिना पणुंडी वर्नी देवु मनकु दिसकड़ा महोस्त्रम मादिकु गुड़ा पैटमासलो चंटी बिट्टल इन्तुकु दिसकरांडे बाग एडस्तरंडी मर नाकु डिस्टर्ब हैतदी ले अदैतदी येलो साकुल जप्तर गंति सकर
Small children, they will come and they will keep there in front of them. But when the child makes noise, they have to get up, so they don't like that.
मरि चिन्ना बिट्टल दिसकोच्चि मुंदु बेचकु मुंदु बेटकु गुच्चुंडारु कानि ओकसार बिट्टल येडु डमोल्बरते दिसकुनी गेलिपोतर बाइटिकिन्क
So right from the beginning, we should make it a point to bring our children to the house of the Lord and keep them. And in most of the churches, we have place where the mothers can go and feed the child, the mothers can go and take care of the child, isn't it?
तलिललकु मरि पत्येकमेन स्थलम उन्तदी संगालो मरि एकड़नेली मरि पालपाठ्यामे कानिले पिल्लल चुस्कुने विषयमले अन्नी विषयले कुड़ा चिन्ना बिट्टलु उन्नपुडे वर चंटी बिट्टल उन्नपुण्णचे मंद्रं मनु वान दिसकुन्रावाली
Another important thing is VBS, we all have VBS in our churches.
इन्को प्रामुक्कन विषयम मरा संगालनिटलो VBS जरुवताउंटदी
We have, after they grow up into VBS, we have the youth meeting.
VBS आईपन्तरवाता वर्क युथ मीटिंग उन्तदी
Now we have VBS and to tell you the truth, the VBS books made by El Shaday from by sister auntie and uncle, that is the one which we are also using in Patmos.
पैटमासलो गुड़ा मरि एलशदाई नुच्चि पंपा पाडे VBS मेटीरियले म्यम गुड़ा इकड़ा वार्डुनाम
And they have taken the trouble to translate it for us in Tamil.
तमिललो तनि तजुमा जैसे कस्टम कुड़ा वारे दिसकुनी माकु पंपिस्तुनार ई मेटीरियल
This year, we are going to do the fourth year.
ई समस्त्रम म्यम फोर्थ ईयर जयस्तुनाम नालगो समस्त्रम VBS
So what I'm saying is, the trouble that we take to educate our children and bring them up in their ways with the Lord, parents also should be involved in bringing up the law, our children.
कबट इदेवुनी ओका वाक्यम विषयमलो पिल्लल यदिकिंपजे से विषयमलो चिन्ना पणुंडी इलांटी VBS मेटीरियले कानि विटन्निति विषयलो मरि वाल दिसकुन्ना कस्टम यलागु उन्दो सेवुकुल सेवुकुरलु तलिदंडलिगा मनमु कुड़ा अन्तेकस्टम दिसकोल
Many of the children are born again in VBS.
चाला मंदी पिल्ललु VBS लुने तिरिजन्मिस्तर
Many of the children take decision to serve the Lord in VBS.
प्रभुनु सेविंच्ये तीर्मानम गुड़ा चाला मंदी पिल्लल VBS लुने दिसकुंटर
So it's a very, very important ministry that we should not neglect for our children.
मरि VBS पर्चर ई मात्रम मनमु निरलक्षम चेगुड़दंडी अन्तो प्रामुक्कमेन अपर्चर पिल्लल कोरकु
Children grow up into youth.
पिल्ललु अवनसुलाव्तर
And that's a very liable time where the Satan can catch hold of them.
सातानु कुड़ा वर्नी पट्टे वैयसु दशा अदे
They are easily going out from our hands.
मरि इन्तो सुनायसंग सुलभंगा मरि चेतुलोंचि वर जारीपोतुंडर
They are more interested in their friends.
स्नेहतुलम मे देख्वा आसिक्तुंडदी वालिकी
They are more time for their friends.
फ्रेंड्स के को समय मिस्तर वरु
It's very, very important for us to be monitoring our children in this age group.
कबट इलांटी वैयसुलो उन्ना आ पिल्लल नी मनम परियवेक्षण चड़ामनदी चाला प्रामुक्कन विषय
Many of them will not tell us what they're doing.
पिल्लल अनेकुलु वर एन जिस्तर नरु मनकु चपरु
And now with the mobile in their hands.
पुड़ु वर्क जेतले ते मोबाइल फोन अच्छिसिन
They have the world in their hands.
लोकमंता चेतुलने उन्दी
They don't want food.
मनमु कुड़ा दिनर बोझनमु कुड़ा चेर
They don't want mother, they don't want father, they don't want family.
तल्यावस्त्रम लेदु तंड्रवस्त्रम लेदु कुटुममवस्त्रम लेदु
They want only their friends.
वर स्नेहतुले वरकावाला
Sometimes they don't want that also, they want only the games.
ओकोनिसार फ्रेंड्स गुड़ा गाद ओन्ली गेम्स
Yes.
गेम्स
So what is that going to do to them?
मरि एन जिस्तदी वन्नी वर जिस्ते वालिकी एम होतदी
They have fallen into the hands of the Satan.
सातानु चेतुले पड़पोतर अन्ते
And this has been, that Corona has been adding more to it.
इन्का दिनिकी कोरना जतजे सिन अन्कोणी
Because Corona was there, so they said, "All the children should have mobile because we cannot come to the school." So you give them a mobile and let them teach from their mobile.
कोरना अच्छिन्दी स्कूल लेदु क्लास लेदु ऑनलाइन क्लास अंजप्पी मोबाइल फोन अप्पट्टी पीडिंच्कुन दिसकुन्नार कदा इबुर्दान्ने मिदिगा
So parents were unhappy, but children were the most happy.
तलिदंडलिगा एम अन्तम संतोषम लेदु मोबाइल फोन विषयलु कानि पिल्ललकैते इन्तो संतोषम उन्तदी
It gives them a feeling of one-up.
हाँ नेनु चाला बाइक यदिकैनु नेनु पत्तन नाइपन अन्ना फीलिंग उन्तदा
We got a status.
हाँ माकु स्टेटस वच्चिन्दन अन्कुंटर आल
And that too not an ordinary mobile, we have to give them a smartphone.
मामुल डब्बा फोन गुड़ा गादु कदा स्मार्टफोन याली मल्ली
And so much so that they know more than what we know.
एन्टेंटे का स्मार्टफोन गुरु चालके को दिलसिपुड़ मनकु मनकु दिलिस्तन्तकंटा आलके को दिलसिपुड़
Whatever we want to know, we have to go to them to ask.
हाँ मनके वन्ना गावाला दिन्ट एन्ट्रा इरे एन्ट्रा अंटे आले जुपितर मनकिन्क
So that, what is this mommy, you also don't know, give, 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 I'll do, tuck, tuck, tuck.
एन्ड बमी नीकुड़ा देलिदांटदी तदा हाँ
Yes, so that is how children are growing up. What I'm trying to say is, it's a very, very dangerous period, a very, very dangerous instrument in the hand, we have to be careful.
कबट चप्पे इन्तरंटे पिल्लर र मरि पिल्ललु यदुगुता उन्नारु अनि दिलस्कुंटानु नेच्कुटानुर मरि वर चेतुले इन्तो प्रमादकारमेन वस्तुले काबट्टी मनमु चाला जागरत वायनचाली
And over that, what they will do?
अन्दिम में मिंच्चे एन जस्तुंडारु
Password.
Password लुंटाइ
Yes, everybody will put a password and keep, "No, you cannot take my phone, you cannot see my, what I'm doing" and that is all.
अन्निटिक पासवर्डले बर्तर नेन जुस्यदी नीकु कनवाडु या न एवर कनवाड्डा अन्कुंटर अन्माटा
Every time they'll change the password because sisters will know, know what is the password, sister, brother will come to know, they will decode the password, so every time they'll change the password.
इन्टलो तोड़बुट्नले की अक्कलु चलले लु अन्नदमुले की पासवर्ड लेल्सकदा योरु के दिलिपुण्डो ओकर पासवर्डलो ओकर बेटकुटर अन्माटा
All these girls are laughing.
हाँ गुड़ They are also keeping.
Yes.
That is why.
Yeah, so, so we cannot have access to what they are seeing, what they are doing, whom they are in friends with. You know, so sad that because of this mobile, many young children have lost their spirituality. Many young children have gone away from Christianity, from Christ. Many young children have gone away and run away from home.
कबट विटन्निति रुंडी पिल्लर र मरि पिल्ललु एम जुस्तुनारु एवर तो फ्रेंडशिप जस्तुनारु एवर तो माट्लार्तुनारु एवर तो संभाष्ल बेटुनारु ये मनकु तेलिदु विटन्निति द्वारा कृष्टुकु क्राइस्टावयानिकिला देवुनी मार्गलिकाल इन्ता दूरमाईपोई लोकमले एकड़ो नशिंचपोई परस्थिति
Anytime we ask them, "What are you doing with your mobile?" "No mommy, this friend called, that friend called, I'm doing only my teacher sends something, so I'm doing that."
टीचर एदा बम्बिचिन्दी मोबाइल अदे जस्तुना अदे जस्तुना आ फ्रेंडुकु फोन जैसले इग्वरंडु व्हाट्सएप अनु एदो जप्ताउंटर मनु एन जिस्तुन अडिकते
What we have to tell them?
मनु एन जप्पाला पुड़
"Okay ma, that's okay, your friend is calling."
सर मंचे नी स्नेहतुल बिलिस्तुनारु चादुकुन्नत्त नाव मच्चे दे
"I will sit with you and in front of me you do that."
नामुंदे गुस्वनी ले ना पाकानु गुस्वनी चयान जप्पाल
If they don't like that means there is something fishy in that.
आलकन नचलेदंटे मी कर्तमयपोइनले एन जस्तुनार अन्नदी
So we have to be careful of them.
कबट इ मनम विच विषयो जागरत उन्डाल
We have to monitor them more.
इन्का एकुगा वर विषयमय परियवेक्षणले उन्डाल मन
More than monitoring, we have to pray for them more.
परियवेक्षण चड़ामकंटे वर गुरुंच्चि एकुगा प्रार्थिंचाली
Yes, and another thing that we should be careful with our young children is their friends.
इन्को विषयम वनसुले गुरुंच्चि मनम पटिच्कोल्सिन्दी वरि स्नेहतुलु
Don't allow the children to go out with their friends, tell the children to bring their friends to your home.
स्नेहतुलनु स्नेहतुलतो पाटु बाइटिक वेल्लनिवादु कानि मी स्नेहतुल्ले मनिटि देच्कोमन जप्पाल
You tell, "Our home is open, you bring your friends, one friend, ten friends, bring and I will entertain."
ओकस स्नेहतुराले पतिस मंथ स्नेहतु अंदर नी मनिटि दिसकोच्चि मनिटलो तल्पले पुर्देर्षय उन्डाइ अंजप्पण
You will get to know whom your child is moving around with.
मी पिल्ललु यवरु तो तिरुगुतुनार अन्नदी मी कर्तम होतदा पुड़
You will know what type of character they are.
वरिकी इलांटी गुणमुन्द अन्नदी मी कर्तम होतदी
You will know what type of speech these people are and where they are roaming around.
वर एकड़एकड़ा दिरुतुनारु वरि माटा तीरे इन्टी वन्नी कुड़ा वरि स्नेहतुल जुस्तम मी कर्तम हैत
Yes, so this is very, very important as parents.
कबट तलिदंडलिगा इदि चाला चाला प्रामुक्कन विषय
In spite of all these things, if we pray and we leave it, the children into the hands of God.
वन्नी चुस्कुन तरवाता कुड़ा मना वर विषयम प्रार्थिंचाली देवुनी हस्तालिकु वर नपगिंचाली
So especially bringing up children, in these days, we need wisdom. See, we can see from Manova and his wife, they ask for wisdom, how should we bring the children? They are asking the Lord for wisdom to be given to them to bring up this child.
तिशेषमगा ई दिनालो इलांटी दिनालो पिल्ललु पेंचे विषयमनदी इन्तो गोपा बाधित मनमु मरि मनोवा इन्का तना भार्य विषयमलो मनमु दिन जुस्नेच्कोच्चु एम एमि चेवलनु बिट्ट विषयमलो माकु नेर्पुनाट्लु अनि वर इन्तो स्पस्तंगा देवुनी अडिग्नाट्य मनम जुस्तनाम
Because it's a very difficult condition in which that you bring up the child.
इदिकंटे मरि तन बिट्टनु मरि यदिकिंपजालंटे यदुगुदलोकी पोशिंचालंटे इदि चाला कस्टम अन्नपनिदी
The child will not understand why the mother is saying, "Don't go there, don't go there, don't touch this, don't do that."
अधिमुटो दिदिमुटो दादा को दिदिनो दंटे चिन्ना बिट्टकु अर्धन जिस्तुन चाला कस्टम कबट इ पेंचड़ु गुड़ा इन्तो कस्टम
Yes, so along with the child, the mother also had to keep the sanctity, isn't it?
बिट्टतो पाटु तल्ली कुड़ा चुर्णी अलागे पवित्रतनु कोनसागिंचाली
That is a sacrifice that we have to pray as parents.
तलिदंडलिगा मनम अट्टित्यागानी चेलिंचड़ां चितंगुण्डाल
And James 1:5, it said.
याकोपत्रिका मोटर जम
If any of you lack wisdom, ask of God.
एवनिकैनु नानु पुड्वेनला अड़ देवु नड़गवालुनु अनु मनकु मकड़ जुस्तनाम
Yeah, so ask the Lord how we should be rearing up our children in the ways of the Lord. All children are not the same, they will be different.
कबट इ चुर्णी पिल्लल अंदर ओकेला उन्डरु ओकोकरु वेरी वेरीगा बिन्नमुगा उन्तर So, this is what you have to do, how to pray, how to pray, if you want to pray.
Each child has a personality of its own.
Each child has a personality of his own.
We cannot compare one child with another.
One child and another child, we will compare them.
Your children themselves would have told you, isn't it?
You have told us about them.
I know, I know, you like her only more than me.
Yes, you have told me that.
Yes, you do everything for her, you don't do anything.
Yes, you have told me that.
Yes, you give her only everything more, you don't give me anything.
Yes, you have told me that.
So they feel jealous of each other.
So, they are jealous of each other.
Though there will be nothing, we say, no ma'am, I like both of you equally, no, 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 I know.
If you see them, we will tell them.
So in the house itself when you are having, so we have to learn how to bring up the children, we have to have wisdom of God to bring up our children because children are gifts from God, they are heritage of the Lord and so we have to know how to take care of the heritage for God.
If you want to pray, you have to pray for God. How to pray, we will pray for God. If you want to pray, we will pray for God. We will pray for God.
Yeah, fifthly, we find.
What do you see?
The hospitality of Manohar and his wife.
Manohar, his wife, is a great woman.
Yeah, so we find that when Manohar asks for the Lord to send that angel again.
When he sends the angel, he will pray for him.
God listens to him.
He will pray for God.
In verse nine, we find.
We see that, he will pray for God, and he will worship the Lord.
Ah, what happens again?
Again, he is not with his wife. When he is not with his wife, he will pray for him.
So now, his wife runs immediately and brings him to meet this.
When she comes, she will go to the church, and she will go to the church.
Yeah, so he comes and meets this angel, but he doesn't realize it's an angel, he realizes that it's a man or a prophet who has come.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yeah, so he says, see in verse 11. Are thou a man who speakest unto this woman? Verse 11.
In the middle, this woman will pray for God.
Yeah, so he doesn't realize that it's a divine pronouncement, he thinks that it's a prophet from somewhere who has come to tell him, tell his wife about this good news.
If the prophet comes, he will tell her. If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God. So, he finds that the angel says yes, and see in verse 14. He says. He repeats the same thing, condition for separation and sanctity again to Manohar. If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God. If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So it is now told even to Manohar that he has to take care of his wife and the child, that they have to be separated and kept sanctified for God.
Now, he will tell Manohar, that he has to take care of his wife and the child, that they have to be separated and kept sanctified for God.
So we find that God expects the father also to take responsibility of the care of the mother and the child.
So, even for the children, for the children, if you want to pray, you will pray for God.
Yeah, so sometimes we find that when the mother wants to be separated and sanctified, the father will be in the sinning of, father will be doing whatever he wants to do, he will say, I want to see the TV, I will put on the TV, I want to have a drink, I will have, so like this we may have in some houses. Whether the mother wants to read the Bible, mother wants to have God's word read, family prayer done, but fathers may not cooperate.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God. The children are not. The children are not. They are not. They are not. We will pray for them.
Unless both the father and the mother are involved in bringing up the children together for the Lord, the child will not grow up well.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
That's why we say that family prayer is very, very important in a Christian home.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Most of the time, we must agree that we don't have time for family prayer in the mornings.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
We will, because each of us go for work at early in the morning, six o'clock, six thirty, seven o'clock.
When you go to work, you will go to work.
The mothers will be in the kitchen preparing food for three or four of them.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So there is no time for family prayer.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Nevertheless, if there is a way, there is a will, there is a way.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
If there is a will, there is a way, you can get up early morning and you can, at least if not the children, the husband and wife can pray.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God. If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yeah, but in the night, we have to see that there is a family prayer, this is a time when you get to know the children well, when you get to know each other well.
When you get to know each other well, you will pray for God.
Insist that your children will be back home by six o'clock or seven o'clock at home, so that they can have the time with you and you can have the time with them.
When you get to know each other well, you will pray for God.
Have family dinner together, it is a time, precious time, for knowing each other, for teaching one another, for getting to know what is happening in their lives.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God. If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
These two practices will keep our children bound to us, bound to the family.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
What we do now?
What do we do?
Mommy will come and quick, oh, I am so tired, quick, cook, 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 keep it, orders by, from outside something and order, now order come.
Mommy comes, she will order.
Swiggy and zomato.
Swiggy, zomato.
Order and keep it on the table.
She will order.
There it is, take it and eat it.
She will eat it.
Yes, so the son will come, take it and go and sit in the front of the TV and eat.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
The girl will come, take it and go into a room with the mobile and eat it.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
The mother will take little and go to the kitchen and eat.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
The father will come and say, oh, nothing is there, I will just go out and have and come.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
This is what happens in our families now, isn't it?
Is it like this?
Very sad.
It is sad.
A time for a woman to get the family together is during the dinner time and during the family time.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Man is the breadwinner.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
But a woman is the keeper of the house and a steward of the house of her own house.
Women are worshippers.
God has given us that responsibility to hold the family together.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So if our families have gone separately, if anything is happening to our family, whom are we accountable to?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Tomorrow when we go and stand before the judgment seat, what will the Lord say?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
What will he answer the Lord?
What will he say?
Lord, I tried so much, but he was not listening.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
What will the Lord say?
He will say.
Why did they give you the word of God?
Why did they give you the church? Why did they give you the church?
Why did they teach you to pray?
Why did they give you the church?
Why did they give you godly women, godly brothers to pray for?
Why did they give you the church?
What did you do?
What did you do?
Why did they destroy my child?
Why did they destroy my child?
Yes, that is our responsibility, God will hold us responsible for the growth of a child as his child or the loss of a child.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Mothers play a very, very important vital role, along with the fathers of course, to bring up the child for God.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Next is the hospitality as we are saying.
We see that.
Manohar wanted to give some gift to the angel, to that man.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
See in verse 15.
We see that. If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yeah, in Hebrews 13:2, what it is said.
In Hebrews 13:2, what it is said.
This is very true here, when you are entertaining, you may be entertaining angels, you think that they are strangers, but they may be angels that you are entertaining.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So what did Manohar say, that you wait here and we will bring some food and we will give you food to eat.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
But what did the angel say, verse 16?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God. If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So what did angel say, that though you may give me food, I will not eat it, but he advised them or he encouraged them to offer that food as a thanksgiving to the Lord.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yeah, so whatever the Lord gives us, whatever the Lord is going to give us, what we learned from here is, we have to give a thanksgiving to the Lord, we receive, but we don't give thanks.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
We faithfully ask the Lord everything and he is faithful to give us, but we are not faithful to thank him for what he has given.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
All of us thank the Lord for the food.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
After that, we eat and we wash our hands and we go. Do we thank the Lord after food for what he has given and what we have eaten?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So it is a practice that we, including me, we don't have that.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Doesn't come, isn't it?
It is.
But we have to, we have to learn that we have to thank the Lord not only for what is laid before us, but after we eat, because so many poor people in this world are not able to have what we have eaten.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So we find that the angel doesn't accept what he says, but says, give them, give the glory and honor to the Lord and give it as a thanksgiving offering, as a burnt offering to the Lord.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
For the good that you are going to receive from God, you thank him even before you receive it.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
See, read in verse 19.
We see that. We see that. If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So we find that this offering of Manohar and his wife was accepted and by the Lord.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
We find that they placed it on the rock.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Now, who is the rock?
Who is the rock?
The Lord Jesus Christ, in 1 Corinthians 10:4, we find that the spiritual rock is the Lord Jesus Christ.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
The flame or the fire signifies the Holy Spirit.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
It signifies the sanctification.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
And the great responsibility that they have been accepted to be parents for this child Samson.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yeah, and we find that this angel, when the fire is lit, he immediately disappears.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yeah, and see here in verse 21.
We see that.
Then, it is only then that Manohar knows, that this person was an angel of God, till all this time he was saying, man of God, man of God, but here he says that he is an angel of God.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yes, so we find that this couple's offering was accepted of the Lord and they were in fear of course, that the angel disappeared from the fire into the Lord, but they knew that their sacrifice was accepted.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
See, we find the fear of Manohar in verse 22.
We see that.
22, verse 22.
We see that. If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So when all this was happening, the Manohar had the fear that they will surely die because no one has seen God and lived.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
The Lord accepted their offering.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Which also indicates that they are accepted of him.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So this means that they also have to sacrifice their life for the Lord.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So the Lord expects each one of us also to be offering ourselves on the altar.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Denying ourselves.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
In Romans 12:1, we all know that verse very well.
In Romans 12:1, we see that. If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
To give ourselves as a sacrifice, living sacrifice.
What does it mean, living sacrifice?
It means that we have to surrender ourselves, deny ourselves, surrender our will to the Lord.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
All ourselves should die and it is only the Lord who should be within us.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
We should, it means a life of consecration, a life of separation, a life of sanctification.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
The Lord Jesus Christ told us that we are in the world, but we are not of the world.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So being in the world, we should not be of the world, that is what means separation, sanctification.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
See, if you see a lotus flower.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
We all admire the lotus.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
A lake full of lotus, you say, oh, it is so beautiful, so, and lotus, they say, stands for purity.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
But in what water does it grow?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Stagnant water, dirty water, isn't it?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yes, but yet this keeps himself pure and others admire it.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Similarly, we also are in the world.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
But we should not be of the world.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
The others looking at us should say, who is this person, so pure, so sanctified, so separated, who doesn't mix about with the world, who has not compromised with the world?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Many times we compromise with the world.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
It is easy for us to compromise with the world than to keep ourselves separated and sanctified.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Many people say, oh, it is easy for sister, sister and easy for brother to say that you have to be like this, but they are in the house of God only, they don't go out, so it is okay for them, they are always reading the word, always praying, so it is easy for them, but we are in the world, no, we are mixing with other people, no, so what they know?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yes, so sometimes people also say, oh, they don't understand our problems.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
We don't want to understand your problems.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
We want you to be growing as lotus is there.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
In that muck of the world, you have to grow, you have to bloom, you have to be a testimony for the Lord.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Okay, the last one that we see about this couple.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
See in verse. See, when all these things happen, we find that Manohar was very frightened, isn't it?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yeah, he said that we will surely die.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So what did, now we see the next verses, 23 and 24.
We see that. If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yeah, so we find that here the faith of Manohar is little shaky.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
But it is his wife who is strengthening his faith.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yeah, she gives him the assurance that if it was, if it, if we had to die, if it pleased the Lord to kill us, he would not have accepted a burnt offering.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
He would have burnt us there itself, isn't it?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
But she says, no, God is not going to kill us because he has accepted our offerings, burnt offerings.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
And also, he has shown us all the things to come in our lives.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
And if he has to kill us, all what he told us would not be coming to pass, his purpose in choosing us, his purpose in giving us a prophecy would not be coming to pass, so surely he will not kill us, he will not harm us.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So it is the wife who is strengthening the husband and bringing him to a greater faith.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Many times it happens, isn't it?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Now also in church we find, wives and sisters will be more.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
But men and husbands will not be that much in faith, isn't it?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
With all apologies to you all.
Okay, apologies accepted.
Okay, so we find that it's a reality, right?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Women will pray more.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Women will read the word of God more.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Women will come and sit and listen more.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
I am not praising the women.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
But it is so, isn't it?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Yeah, so we find, now yesterday I heard one news, sister Satya was telling I, in that village, which sister? Narasi Palam, Narasi Palam, there is only a sister's saba, there is not even one man there.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
I was saying, even the elders are ladies.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
There is only one man.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
That is the husband of the woman who started that saba.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Ah, it's a reality, see.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Here itself, I was surprised to hear that.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
So we find that, so women have a greater faith, they come into the faith more, they are stronger in faith, so it is our responsibility also to bring our husbands, isn't it?
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
We can't blame them because they are going out, they have a lot of responsibilities, they have office burden, they have stress, they have so many financial burden, everything they have.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
But we have to encourage the husbands, it is very important for us to encourage them.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
If you keep on nagging them, nagging them, they will not come to the faith.
If you want to pray for God, you will pray for God.
Pray and leave it into the hands of God.
प्रार्थना चेंडी देवुनिहस्तालकी विदिचपेट्टन
Many women cry and pray for their husbands.
चालमंदी चुरंडी बार्यलु तम वर्त्यलकोरकु मारी एडुस्तु प्रार्थिस्तुंतार
Wayward husbands.
आ मारी वर्त्यल इंतो विचले वेडिगा तिरुता अंतर
Backslidden husbands.
वनिका वनिकंज वेस्तुना वर्त्यलका चालमंद अंतर
Drunkard husbands.
तागबोत्ले न वर्त्यल अंतर
Husbands who are gambling.
मारी जूदमाडे वर्त्यल अंतर
So many problems, husbands who sell everything in the house.
इंट्लो उन्ना अन्नी तिसकेल अम्मेस्तुंतर वर्त्य
Husbands who battle, who beat the wives and the children.
बार्यलु बिडलु मारी कोट्ये वर्त्यल अंतर
How to bring them to the faith?
चुरंडी वार्नी अला विश्वासमु तिसकरावाली
Can we lose our faith?
मारी मनमे मन विश्वासानि पोगोट्कुंडा म
We have to be strong in faith.
मनम विश्वासमलो बलंगुंडाल
This is where we should not only come to the Lord.
इकड़े प्रभुदेद को राडम मात्रमे कापुंडा
We should come to the church for fellowship with other sisters so that we will be strengthened by the fellowship and prayers of the saints.
इतर सहोदरीलतो प्रार्थनालो सावासमलो बलपडस्तु बलपडतु इतर लंदरनी पुदा मनम बलपर्चे वारम उंडाल
We need not tell all our problems to everybody in public.
आ अंदरकी पब्लिक्का अंदरकी मन समस्यलन्नी कस्टालन्नी जप्पुकोडं कादु अवसरम लेद
We can have confidence in the God servant and their wife, wife and we can have faith in some senior sisters and women of God.
देवुन सेवुकुड़ा कानी सेवुकरालु कानी पत्ता सहोदरीलु यारण अनुभव वाक्य नुंटे वारीके दो कोतिको कोतिका मन चेप्पकोच
Or even of your age whom you have confident.
लेदा मी वाइसलो उन्ना सहोदरीलु मीरु अंते मीरु वारी नम्मुतारु अननुकुंडा वारीकु चेप्पकोच
Who will keep your things in confidence?
कबटी मीरु चेप्पे वाटिनी वारु गुप्तंगा उस्तार अंदरकी चेप्पे वाल्लु कापुंडा रहस्यंग उच्च वारीकोरकु मी चेप्पकोच
What, otherwise what happens?
लेखपोते एंटी जर्गुदा चेप्पन
He'll say, don't tell anybody, I'm telling this to you only.
नीको ओका धानके जप्तुदा येवर्की जप्पलेद अंतरु
Then next one, hey, you know something, I'm telling you only, don't tell the rest.
तेलसा नीको ओका धानके जप्तुरे के एवर्क जप्पलेद अंतरु
Then, one, two, three, four, five, everybody will know.
अट्ला ओकोकर अंदरकी जेल्स्पोतद अन्मटार
Yes, then that sister will say, hey, it happened to you like this, how did you know? This one told me, that one told me, that one told me, zigzag puzzle, everything.
कबटी इनको सहोदरु अच्छी मनी तेलसा इटलाइन अंत अटलाइन अंत नीकड़ा देल्सु नाकड़ा देल्संटा कते अंत बायट्पड्डपोतद इनकाल
Women are very, what do you say? Women are, we don't have the ability to keep things with us.
संगतुल कडपले बेटकुले रे श्रीले
That gift is not in us.
आ वारम लेदु श्रीलकी
Men will keep everything within themselves.
पुरुषुलन्नी बेटकुंडारु लप्ला
But we are open and transparent.
कानी श्रीलु बात्रम मनी बट्टवायल जप्ताउंडारु पारदशिकाकुंडारु
Yes.
अंते कदा
But that open and transparent should not lead to gossip, no?
कदा अदि मुच्चट्ले बेटेदांट्ला कादु अंदर विषयल इकड़ाका चेप्पे वाट्ले उंडकुदा अट्ला
So that we should guard against.
कबटी दान विषयमलो जार्त्वाइंचाल
Gossiping is for the devil.
चि मुच्चट्लन अदि अपवादन उच्च
Sharing is from the Lord.
आइते पंचकोडमु प्रभु निंदी
Yes, so this is what we should be learning. So we find that the wife strengthening her husband Manohar.
कबटी इकड़ा मनम चुस्नाडे ते मनोहर बार्य मनोहानु बलपर्चिस्तुंताम मनम इकड़े चूस्तुनाम
Yeah, so finally we find in verse twenty four, God honored their faith.
इरवानाल गोच्चुम चिवरगा वारी विश्वासन देवुडु गनपर्ची
Yeah, and she bare a son and called his name Samson.
तरवाता श्रीकुमारुनिकानी अतनिक समसोननु पेयरपेट्टनु
Yeah, the meaning of Samson is strength of the son.
समसोन अंते कुमारुनिकु उंडावल्सना लेदा कुमारुडु कलिगिन्ना बलमु
Oh, son of righteousness.
लेदा नीति संतानमु नीतिसाले नीति कुमारुडु
There is in Malachi four two, we find Lord Jesus Christ referred to as the son of righteousness, isn't it?
मलाकी नाल गुरिलु मन चूस्ताम कदा आयान
So out of the dead
नीति सूरुडु मनम चूस्ताम
Out of the deadness of Manohar's wife's womb, Lord raised up a fruit for her, isn't it?
मारी मनोहातन कुटुममुलन्ना गोड्डूबार्य तनमुलो नुंडी देवुडु चक्कटी फलमुनु तिसकराडमु मन इकड़े चूस्तुनाम
See verse twenty five.
इरवाई दोश्चुम चुरंडी मारी यहोवा आत्म जोरियाकु नु एस्तैलुनु मध्यनुन्ना महोनदानुलो अतनी रेपुटकु मोदलिपेट्टनु
And twenty four last, Samson grew and the Lord blessed him.
यहोवा अतनी आशीर्वादिंचनु
Yeah, and we find that the grace of God was upon him and the Holy Spirit of God also was upon him. That's why he could have the strength to go and fight with the Philistines.
अटी यहोवा आत्म अतनमिदा रावडमु यहोवा दया कृपा आ बालुनु मिदा आविदंगा रावडमु मनम इकड़े चूस्तुनाम
Now we know all what Samson did, isn't it?
समसोन जेसिन अंतम मनकु देल्सिन्दे कदंडी
Yes, sometimes I really wonder, I really don't know how he managed to take three hundred foxes, tie their tails and put that thing, light, firelight and send them.
ओकनकन बटकुडमे कस्टम अंते मुड़ूंदल नक्कल बटकुनि तोकल गट्टेसी पोलमंदा गालचिस्नाडु चाल आश्चर्यम अन्पिस्तद गोन्सल समसोनु एत्ला एत्ला बलमु समसोनु कीदनी
And how he must have, one, two, he takes, ties the tail and keeps them and again catches another. How he managed to keep all of them together, I only
एत्ला ओकतनकन बटकुनि इनकोनकन तोकल गट्टेसी मला वेंटने विट्टु बेट्टी मला इनको वेंटने इनकोर इनक्रेन नक्कल बट्टेसी तोकल गट्टेसी एला जेसेडु गुदा अर्धंगाद नाक
One fifty pair.
नोटायाबे जतलु नक्कल नक्कलु
And all of them with that torch.
अन्नितिके मारी नेपुन निपण दिच्छनाड
How he would have managed that, we don't know, but the Lord was with him, Lord's grace was with him.
देवुनी दया अतनमिदुंदी
Isn't it? अंते कदा And with the ox god, he slew the Philistines, isn't it?
कबटी मारी दिम्मे तो तनु फिलिस्तीलु गुदा आविदंगा चंपेस्नाड
And in the end, in his death, he killed more Philistines than when he was alive, the Bible says, isn't it?
कबटी तनु चनिपोइना पुडु तनु ब्रतुकुना पुडु चंपिना फिलिस्तील अंदरकंटे कुदा तनु मरिणिंचना पुडु चंपिना फिलिस्तील सांख्या गोप्पा दी एकुवान
That also I wonder how he did it.
अदि कुदा एला जेसेडु नाक आश्चर्यम अन्पिस्तद
See, two pillars in the middle center, here there are no two pillars here, it's all in the side. But like that two pillars, his hand would have stressed so much, I don't know, he was blind, he caught hold and with all his strength, he asked the Lord, that one time, Lord, this last time, give me the strength.
योकसारी नाकु बलमि मणि मारी देवुनिप्रार्थन जेसिनाडु समसोनु आ दागोनु देवाले लोका रेंडु मुख्य स्तंबालनु गेट्टी बटकुनि लागेश्नाडु योकसारी ने पगतिचकोनु नाड
See verse sixteen and twenty eight.
पदहारो जयमु इरवै एन्मिदो वच्चुम नैदिपतुल पदहारु इरवै एन्मिदि अप्पडु समसोनु यहोवा प्रभाव दयचेसिनु नु नापकम चेस्कुनुमु देवादयचेसी ईसारी मात्रमे ननु बलपर्चुमु ई रेंडु कनुलन्नी मित्तमु फिलिस्तीलनु ओकमारे दंडिंची पगतीर्चुकोननि मणि यहोवा कुमारपेट
Yeah, so the Lord heard his prayer.
अटी देवुडु अतन प्रार्थना विन्न
Though he went away from the Lord, though he did not follow, keep the sanctity, sanctification of the Lord, he was not as right in the front of God. Still, God had pity upon him and helped him in that last time.
मारी तनु अवलमिंचवल्सना नाजीरु नियमानु कानी प्रत्येक पर्चा पड्डंगानी पवित्रतनु तनु पोगोट्कुनि देवुं दुरंगा वेलिपनपडिनी कुदा मारी देवुडु तनमोरनु हालकिंची तनकु मारी मुंदुन्ना बलमुनु ओकसारी मरला इच्छन
And God gave him the opportunity to rule over his people twenty years in thirty one.
मुप्पै अकट्टो वच्चुम अंत सद्धाम कबटी इरवै दिएंडलु आतदु अधिपतिगा अनगा न्यायाधिपतिगा उंडटकु देवुडु समसोन कावकास्म इच्छन
See, in this thirty first verse, we find that he, his brethren and all the house of the father came down and took him and brought him up and buried him.
मुप्पै अकट्टो वच्चुम अप्पडु अतनी स्वदेश जनमुल जनलुनु अतनी तंड्री इंटिवार अंदरुनु कुड़ी अतनिन मोस्कुनि वच्ची जोरियाकुनु एस्तैलुकुनु मध्यनुन्ना अतनी तंड्रीयन मनोहर समाधिला अतनी पातिपेटरी
Which means that Manohar and his wife would have had more children after them.
अंते मनो अंते समसोन तरवाता मारी मनोहाकु अतन बार्यकु तरवाता गुदा मारी पिललु पुट्नारनि मनम इकड़े चूस्ताम
Which also means that his father would not have been alive when this happened, when he died and they came and buried him in the father's grave.
मनोहर समाधिलो अतनी पातिपेटरी जावतुन्ना कारण बट्टी मारी इदि जरिंना पुडु बाऊशा मनोहार दिवरके मृतिपोंदिन्दा वच्चनु गुदा मनम चूस्तुनाड
How much it would have saddened the heart of Manohar's wife to see God-given child being dead like this?
देवुडु माकिच्छिना बिड्डा इला चनिपोडमु इंता दुक्ककरमणि बाऊशा मनोहर तल्ले जुशंतो बादपड्डिन्दा वच्च
The reason for which God gave him the condition in which the Lord gave him to be sanctified, to be separated, was not done by Samson.
मारी देवुडु आ बिड्डनु इच्चुटुलो उन्ना कारणमु उद्देश्यमु संकल्पम अदे ते उंदो मारी समसोने का जीवितमुलो इदि नेरेवेच्चा लेखपोप्पवाडिने अने ओका दुक्कम वेलिति तनु कलिगिंदी
They asked the Lord for wisdom.
नानम अडिगरु बिड्डा विषयमलो
To bring up the child in the
बिड्डन एला बिड्डा विषयम एमएम चेल्लो नडिगिनार
In spite of all that, we find that Samson was not according to the the conditions the Lord had laid for separation and sanctity.
ई वन्नी उन्नपडिनी कुदा मारी समसोनु तन जीवितमुलो मारी नाजीरु तनमुनु लेदा प्रत्येकर्का उंडे विषयमलो नु पवित्रंग उंडे विषयमलो तप्पीपोइनाडन अन्न विषयम मनम इकड़े चूस्तुनाम
So this is what we should be as parents. We should be careful in bringing up our children in the ways of the Lord.
कबटी देवुनी ओकमार्गमुलनु मन बिडलु यदि इंपविषयमलो पोशिंची पेंचे विषयमलो इलांटी जागतुल तलिदंडुलगा मनम तिसकोवाली
Asked the Lord for wisdom.
कबटी नानम कोरकु प्रभु नडिगंडी
We have to be models for our examples to our children.
मन पिललुकु मनमु मादरी करंगा उंडाली
If the child sees us praying, reading the word of God, the child will sit down and read the word of God and this is no use. Forcing them, telling them after one age, certain age, is no use, but unless they see you, they'll do this.
मीरु बाइबल सदरडमु प्रार्थना चेडम पिललु चूस्ना पुडु पिललु गुदा मीलांग जेस्तार ओका वाइस वच्चुंतरु तम मीरु वार्नी बलमंता बेट्लेर वत्तुरु तिसकरालेर कानी मीरु चेवडम चुस्ना पुडु वारु कुदा चेडनिका वकास्म उंडुंदी
If we kneel, we are told to kneel down as we read the word of God. We know that Uncle Buck Singh also used to kneel even till the old age, kneel and read the word of God. So if such a great man could do, who are we? We are nothing in front of him, in front of the lives of the Lord. We also have to kneel. Honoring the Lord is very, very important in our lives. If we show the children that we honor the Lord, they will also honor the Lord.
कबटी प्रार्थिंचमणि चेप्पन अपुडु मनम मोकालु अपुडु मनल जूसी मारी पिललु गुदा मोकालु अंतर बक्सिंगारु इंतो उर्धापमलो कुदा आयान मारी मोकालुनकी इस्तपड्यवार कबटी आयानकंटे मनम एकोवरमे मी कम देवुनिकोरकु देवुन महिमकोरकु देवुन गनपर्स्टकोरकु मनम चेस्ते मन पिललु चेस्तार
Now, even if you tell, come on your knees, they will not come on your knees.
इप्पुडु मोकालुमेदिकरंडी अनि मन चेप्पुंटे गुदा वरर
Yes, we don't know why. This little child has come here, yes? Yes, children will come like this, but we cannot stop them, it's the Lord's house, isn't it? Yes, so I hope from this life of Manohar and his wife, we have learned, the Lord has helped us to know so many things in bringing up the children for them.
मारी देवुनिकोरकु पिललु निपेंचे विषयमलो मारी मनोहर मनोहर बार्य वारी ओका जीवितमुलो तलिदंडुलगा वारु तिसकुन्ना बाद्यतलु वारु पोट्टी पाटिंचना नमुन आयते उंदो विदंडिनुची मनम गुदा विटिने एचकुंडा
Yes, sir, is it?
अक
Yes, sir, sir.
अंते प्रार्थना